Hello Meg.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine. I never get to talk to you anymore. This is very weird.
Yeah, well, they discourage mingling these days.
Mingling, is that what the kids are calling it?
Yeah.
Are you our designated administrator for this meeting?
I am. It should be very brief, I imagine.
Oh, then you don't know us very well.
All right.
Are you still far, far away, Stephanie?
No, I just arrived home yesterday to help put my youngest back together. And then I'll be going back after Thanksgiving.
Get, put your youngest back together? What, you have a very young Lego set?
Yeah, we're, we're struggling. When I disappear, her anxiety level goes up, her, she starts to fall apart. And yeah, we were having, she wasn't getting any, it was a mess. Thank you to Shilu, Laura Gudachi, Meg, tell them thank you. They've held her together.
No, do you have an unhealthy parent you're trying to help or?
Yeah, you probably, yeah. So my dad was diagnosed with melanoma. It is one of the most horrible things you've ever seen. It spreads the fastest you've seen. He's now in hospice. I don't know if he's gonna make it a week.
Oh, my goodness, I'm so sorry.
It all, I mean, literally in beginning of October, he's living on his own, driving, doing his groceries, everything. And he can't get out of a wheelchair or a bed now.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah, and you know, Leah, my sensitive one, she, she loves my dad and that's where she got all her art skills. He's my artist in the family and passed it to her. It's not for me.
You're all right, Bree.
Yeah, I'm stick figures.
That's what I am.
Yeah.
Officially, I draw at second grade level.
That would be me.
Yes.
I can trace really well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Taylor did that. Sorry to hear about your dad, Stephanie.
Thanks, George. Yeah.
Hi, Laura. Good.
Yeah, I was just on the meeting with the Sohegan Finance Committee. We were just talking special ed budget.
I could not get in. My link didn't work and I.
Oh, you probably weren't sent the new link today?
Wasn't, so I thought, well.
So, yeah, because they said something about Michelle had an emergency, so they changed the whole meeting, so it's under Joel.
They did, and I, maybe I did get a new link, but I didn't find it.
Yeah, it came out late this afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope everything's okay with Michelle.
Did they finish the meeting?
No, they started at five and they're gonna go till six or however long they need.
Okay.
They're digging in. Lots of questions.
So you're missing him.
Him and John.
Oh, John, that's the other one. There's John.
Or, or just him. Not so bad. I can never remember.
Oh, here's John.
Somebody else, somebody else, somebody else is missing.
I guess.
Just him, right?
No, there should be one more.
Amy's here. Well, she's here, but she's not here. There she is. Oh, I'm counting myself. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, don't count yourself. If we only have half an hour, should we make Amy chair the meeting? Can you get started?
We have a quorum. And that's entirely up to all of you.
I can do that. It's fine.
Don't have much on the agenda.
One item, I believe, right?
Yeah. So is Adam joining the meeting though?
He's not because he is in the Mont Vernon meeting, I think.
Oh, okay.
Divide and conquer this evening.
Okay, so are you providing the information on the agenda item?
Well, I can't, actually, Tim was supposed to do that.
Oh, I see. Okay. Yeah, because I'm not really privy to.
So my understanding is the new position, the new assistant superintendent position, is what each individual board will be voting on tonight. I know Tim has the information about that position. But they wanted it voted on at each individual board before it went in front of the SAU board tonight.
So the vote that they're looking for is to, is what? Is to?
To approve that position as part of the SAU budget.
I see. Okay. All right, well, why don't I call? Oh, I see John. Oh, John, oh, you're there. I see.
I'm here.
Okay, so why don't I at least call the meeting to order so we can get started? Except I don't have that special language either that we're supposed to say.
Um, let me see if I can.
How I have the consent, I mean, the, that language.
They were supposed to say.
Does anybody have Tim's contact information? I'm wondering if he's not able to get in.
Yeah, let me text him.
I can read from the minutes of the SAU meeting. What Steve said for the SAU. And, and insert Amy's name. As vice chairperson of the Sohegan Cooperative School District Board, I find that due to the state of the emergency, I declare by the governor, declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04 and its extensions. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the government's, governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, Amy is confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. Utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting, all members of the board and selected staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch or in or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.sau39.org. We provide a public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting. If there are problems with access, if anyone has a problem, please email awallace@saup39.org. You bet the public is unable to access the meeting. The meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's take, start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Each member will be asked to state their presence and say where they are and if anyone else is in the room with them, which is required under the right to know law. Amy, you want to do the roll call?
Sure, I'll start with Steve Coughlin.
Hi, I'm Steve Coughlin. I am home and alone, except I'll be joined by someone very briefly who will pass through in a minute.
Thank you. Stephanie Grunt.
I am home in Amherst and alone.
Laura Taylor. Okay, I'll take that as, yes, I couldn't hear you. You might want to check your volume for later. George Torres?
Home and woefully alone.
John Glover?
I am home and also alone.
Okay, and I am home and alone as well. And Tim just texted that he is trying to join, so hopefully.
Sent him the link.
Okay, so he should be.
Yeah, and Adam almost finished with his board meeting. Also, he'll be getting on as well.
Okay, so I guess call the meeting to order at 5:37? Oh, and just in time, Mr. Gronstra.
Multiple modalities thing.
So we, we went through the, the saying that we have to, that we have to say, Steve read it from the past minutes. And we've done a roll call with everyone except for you.
Okay, yes, I am here, home and alone.
Okay, and we've called the meeting to order, so we're ready to roll.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, just trying to get my bearings here. So. Need the. Is everybody on? I don't even know. Okay. And Meg is our administrator?
Yes, Adam may jump on. He's just finishing up with his board meeting.
Okay, no problem. Open up. Sorry. Okay, well, in that case, I'm gonna turn it over to Meg. Is there anything that needs to be discussed regarding the resolution for the assistant superintendent?
So my understanding is that the superintendent has asked each individual board to make a motion tonight and then vote upon approving this position to be a part of the SAU budget.
Okay, and that has to happen at the individual school board level as well as the SAU level, I'm assuming.
Exactly.
Okay. So, in that case, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, go ahead, Steve.
I resolve that we approve the transition to curriculum coordinator position to be an assistant superintendent position in the SAU budget.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, so Steve makes a motion, seconded by Amy. So any discussion at this point?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we'll do one question at a time, so everybody has the opportunity to ask. And then if nobody wants, then we'll come around to your second question, John. So go ahead with your first one.
Okay, Adam's letter said it was recommended that we take this step. My question is recommended by whom and for what reason?
Meg, do you happen to know?
You mean, recommended to have each individual board vote on it or the position itself? Why is the position?
The, the, the former.
Okay.
Why, I mean, the letter says it was recommended that this happen, and I just wanted to know the reasoning behind it, says.
My understanding, and this is only through a very brief conversation with Adam this afternoon, when I found out that nobody except for me was going to be at this board meeting, is that, just to make sure, so my understanding is that the, if the SAU board voted to approve this, it would be an approved position in the SAU budget. But in order to allow all of the districts individually to have their say with regard to supporting or non-supporting of this position, it was his preference that we do it this way and then put it in front of the SAU board. He also did clarify for me that if one of the boards voted this position down, it does not necessarily mean that it still wouldn't be approved at the SAU board. And he could probably explain that a little bit in more detail than I. I do think he's joining us in a few minutes, if you'd like to wait, but that's my understanding of the situation. Tim, I don't know if you have more information than that.
I do not. That is the same understanding that I have of it when he spoke of it at the four chairs meeting, so I think that's consistent, so thank you. Does anybody else have a question?
I do, Mr. Chair, a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
So I guess if, if Sohegan was to not approve this position, doesn't mean Adam could not still move forward with it. However, the SAU, well, Sohegan wouldn't bear the allocated cost for that position. It'll be borne against the other. I guess.
Districts.
Yeah. I would assume that's how it would work because we would not theoretically sign off on that position.
Oh, I see. Adam has joined us, so perhaps Adam can, can answer that.
Although he's muted.
Yeah, can I, there's also a, someone in public comment or someone asking about public comment in the chat, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Wondering if, if there will be public comment at the end of the meeting.
If we have time, we can certainly do that. I don't think we, yeah, we do have a public input at 5:55, so hopefully we'll get this wrapped up in our next tour.
All right, I just wanted to let them know.
Can, can I give a little bit of information that I have from working on the SAU? And looking at the SAU budget, budget and the conversations that have happened there, it might help everybody understand where this is coming from.
Yeah, please, Stephanie, go ahead.
Okay, so there were a lot of questions about why are we adding another headcount? And what is the purpose of this position? And I'll, I'll be honest upfront, I was like, we don't need another position in the SAU. I was like, what's this about? So through the discussions, I learned some really good information. So this, because of the amount, of the quantity of information we're looking to analyze, the look at, you know, we're looking at the math curriculum. You know, we get, we, we're really inundating one, one assistant superintendent with every question we have when it comes to testing, how our kids are doing, everything else. And it's really, Christine is working round the clock and we know that that's just not realistic. And she's not really able to get to all the information that we really would like to see. So the idea is, and there's always been two curriculum, not always, but almost all the time, there's been two curriculum people. So when Nicole Heimark was around, Christine was around, we had two. When Nicole left, I think that was about the only time Christine was the only person for a while. So then they did add that other curriculum position. And then Natasha was there. She has since left. And now that position is open, so Christine's not getting the extra support she needs. Now, what we, we, you know, with things that we've talked about is we're not seeing good trend, real clean transitions from Amherst Middle School into the high school. Whether it's math, English, social, all those things, we would like to see us better transition, which is what this position would focus on because they're really looking at the middle school and high school only, where Christine would work in the, at the elementary school. One of the things that I did ask, and I know we had discussions on, was the .6 FTE position that is not, that is open currently at Sohegan for dean of faculty, which is like another curriculum position. I asked, could we not fill that position? If we already have, if we have, if we're gonna put in this assistant superintendent that works across both schools and really helps Natalie focus what she needs to do at the high school, but can look across all schools. Can we not fill that position? Adam's like, yeah, I think so. So I think we're not gonna fill that, but so this person would be a really good support person to help the curriculum. So that's where we ended up. So honestly, I think it's a better place to look at smoothing out the curriculum cost of both schools. So I am actually for that at this point.
Yeah, thanks for that context, Stephanie. That was, that was good. Adam, thank you for joining us. I don't know how much you caught. There was a question prior to Stephanie's input. And of course, I can't remember, Meg, do you remember what we were gonna ask Adam to expand on?
Yep, John had asked a question about whether or not if the, for example, if the Sohegan Board did not vote in, oh, no, I think it was George, sorry, George. Or didn't vote in favor of this position, that means that if the SAU board approved it anyway, the Sohegan School District was not financially attached to supporting that position. Is that correct, George?
Yeah, yeah, you summed it up correctly, Meg. Thank you.
Yep.
So the, the way the statute reads is if more than half of the districts in the SAU represent, representing at least, I believe it's 50% of the students in the SAU vote to approve it, then it gets approved. So if Sohegan is roughly, I think, 35 or 39% of the students. So if Amherst and Mont Vernon approved it, which they just did, and Sohegan didn't, it would still, if passed by the SAU board, it would still go into effect. And Sohegan would still have to pay their apportionment for that position.
Okay, thank you for that. So it would still be part of the shared cost by mere fact that the majority had approved it. Okay, got you, got you.
Correct.
So given that it's, it's a moot point practically. Although I still, I will say that I am in favor of this. I think, you know, to Stephanie's point, I think there is somebody needed in that position. Christine is stretched very thin and having somebody to focus on the high school and middle school and more importantly, that transition, I think is, is very, will be very valuable. And I was just looking at email. I don't see the presentation that I tried to forward to you from Mike, but it does discuss the change in his staffing as well. So you'll have an opportunity to take closer look at that and we can discuss that at our meeting on the 30th as well. Okay. Uh, yes, Laura.
I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Can we have the public speak before we vote in case they wanted to speak on this issue specifically?
Oh, of course. It's, we have, I just want to get, make sure that we get through anybody else's questions. We do have time for public input. But we can get there quicker if we don't have any other questions or comments. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I had, I had my hand up just quickly. I, I really appreciate your analysis, Stephanie. That was very helpful. And the outcome of making that reduction at, at the high school. So I think that definitely helps, helps me in making a decision on this. Because we're always trying to look at the bottom line with, with the budgets and, you know, it's, it's a difficult year and we have a lot of other asks for the district, so I really appreciate that. And I also believe that having a, someone, someone focused on curriculum for the high school is great. And when we look to hire that person, I would definitely be interested in making sure that they have experience in that area. The high school is, is a, a different beast, so I'm excited to be able to get the information. Not that Christine, Christine does an amazing job, but I think it's, it's a lot of work. And having that, that support for our district will be invaluable.
Tim.
Thank you, Amy. Hold on, Laura, so you had, that was a comment. I want to go back to John, because he did have also his hand up, but then I'll come back to you. Okay, John, go ahead.
Thanks, Tim. So my original question was, Adam, in your memo, you had, you had written to eat something to the effect of to sort of ease process issues. It was recommended that this motion be carried by the individual boards. My first question was by, recommended by whom?
Legal counsel.
Okay. And then just for, to make it clear, this is not adding a position to the SAU staff, but rather reallocating an existing position to a new position. So the curriculum coordinator position will no longer be open. It'll instead be an open position for an assistant superintendent.
That's exactly right.
Okay, and then finally, maybe finally, I think there's one more question, maybe two, two more. One. The, this person is primarily going to help with curriculum coordinating between the high school and the middle school, which I think is fantastic. Is the reason for going for assistant superintendent position, which is presumably a more costly position than a curriculum coordinator? Is that, so that person has more authority within the SAU?
Yeah, it's also to attract people that have more experience. So a, we, we tried to hire the position last year while, while you weren't, in the interim, while you weren't on the board, John, and we had, we weren't able to fill it with a quality candidate. And what we learned was as a curriculum coordinator, both the salary and the position feel like a step down for principals. And what I want is someone that's got principal level experience, that can be a, authorities, the wrong word, but that can work with our principals and draw off of their experience at the building level to help guide them and be someone that our principals look up to and, 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 and respect.
Okay, well, that makes a lot of sense. And then is there anybody you have in mind at this point? Or is this going to be an, I mean, I guess the question is, is this somewhat down the road? Or are you been waiting for these approvals so that you can put the, put it out there and get resumes and, and find interest and, and things?
Yep, so my goal is to post it after the SAU board approves it, if they do. And because we've not filled these positions this year, attempt to hire mid-year if there's candidates available, because frankly, we need the help. But if not, we'll hire as late as July 1, 2021. I, I'm not aware of anyone internally who's interested in applying for the job, although I may not know, someone might have an interest that I'm not aware of. And I, in my networks have, of course, put feelers out to folks that I hope may be interested, but, you know, for every 10 people I might speak to, maybe one is interested because most people are happy where they are or are not looking for a job, or, and those are the types of people we generally want, is people that are being successful in their current roles and might want to bring that, that success to us.
Okay, great. Thanks, Adam. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Okay, back to Laura, and then I'd like to get, have time for public input before we vote, and then we have to get to our SAU meeting at 6:00.
Yes, I appreciated Stephanie, her filling us in, and I agree with Amy. I think having this high school experience, someone with. I think having this high school experience, someone with definite high school experience is what we really need. And, Pam, I just want to confirm, you said Mike Berry supports this position in the.
Yes, he does.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anybody else? I would like, in that case, seeing none, I would like to invite public comment. So if we have anybody. I'm not sure if it's, if it's any of the attendees that need, would want to chime in or ask a question.
Katie Dodge.
Yeah. Okay.
In chat.
Oh, there we go.
She said she's gonna type.
Yep, I see that. Thanks. So I will read it out loud when she finishes and then the appropriate person can answer.
Oh, yeah. Is it possible to open her audio and just be done with it in a more fluid manner so that she is not scrambling typing with, under, under time pressure?
I don't have that capability, but I'm not sure if Meg does.
I know what it's, I've been there, but I've been there where you're typing frantically and it's, it's a mess, so.
Meg, if you right-click her in the attendees window and say allow to talk, she'll be all set.
Okay. It's Katie Dodge.
There she is.
Got it. Katie, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you for doing that. That was helpful. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can hear you. Go ahead, Katie. If you can state where you're from as well, that'd be great.
I'm Katie Dodge. I'm from Amherst. I have children at Sahigan and Amherst Middle School, about, two children at Sahigan, I guess that's the important point. I was in a meeting with a lot of parents yesterday, last night. And a lot of them don't understand Empower. And we're talking about someone who's an author, a really well-published author, an engineer, a doctor at St. Joseph's Hospital, my husband who's an engineer, and myself who's a teacher. And I really liked what one teacher said. She said, well, well, one, one of the speakers said, well, the colleges are okay with it. And this parent said, we, the parents, are the ones that are most vested in our children. We're the ones that love our children the most. We're the ones that want to know what's going on with them the most. So if the parents don't understand Empower, who cares if the colleges do? I loved that. I thought it was so great. And as, as a teacher of 11 years, I will tell you that Empower is pretty futile. And I think this actually kind of segues into what you're voting on tonight. Christine partly is overwhelmed because she's trying to do all this data with Empower and Power School. If you look at Google Classroom, which is the third portal that Sahigan's doing, and so you probably all know this, but the teachers are working with three different platforms. Google Classroom actually shows me what my student has done, the actual assessment, shows the score, and even offers what, a grading, a rubric, a report card to report out during reporting periods. And it's free. I don't know if that's good or bad depending on where people's interests are or what their motivation is, but I think it's great. I'm not sure why we'd be paying for Empower when it's failing the students and it's failing the parents. I'm, I just feel like we keep embracing this lame duck. And I have a student, actually, the other night, who was just so frustrated with how arbitrary and subjective Empower is. And, and I'll, I'll just reiterate this. I know I told you before, but the way Empower works, teachers can give.
I'm sorry, Katie, Katie, I'm sorry. So I'm gonna have to cut you short. We, I understand your frustration around Empower. You're not the only one.
I'll just finish.
You're not the only one. We need to wrap it up.
A B or a B plus or a C or a C plus. They can just give some version of an A, a B minus or a C minus. So, yeah, that's about it. I think instead of, I'll just say, because you're voting on this, instead of a second assistant superintendent with all that data, a lot of it would just be a lot simpler if you get rid of Empower and Power School. And just less is more. Just keep it simple. So thanks so much for listening.
Okay, thank you for your comments. All right, I don't see anybody else in the attendee list or anything that wants to chime in. So we're right up against the SAU meeting. So we have a motion, we have a second. We should take, move this to the vote then, if there's nobody else with any other questions. So I'll just go around. Steve Coughlin?
Yes.
Amy Facey?
Yes.
John Glover?
Yes.
Stephanie Grunt?
Yes.
Laura Taylor?
Yes.
George Torres? Torres, yes. And Gronstra, yes. So thank you all very much. That's seven, four, none, none against, passes. Yeah, undisputed. That's not the right word, but.
Unanimously is the word.
Thank you, unanimous. I knew it was a U-word. Yeah, it was close. All right. So if nothing else, I think we need to hop off here. And we're one minute late, but I'm sure we will be fine. So I'll take a motion to close this meeting or adjourn.
Adjourn the meeting.
Okay, anybody oppose? Okay, seeing none, then that means everybody agrees. So 7:00, we are adjourning and we'll see you at the SAU meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Do we need roll call for that? I hope not.
No, we're good. Thanks, John.
Okay, good.